All the hearing to Florida, just a notice to those that are present. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded, and it will be. Okay. Do you have material for us tonight?
Yeah, so we mailed you a letter on October 24th. And I have extra copies if you need some of those.
I'd like one if I didn't.
Lynn, I gave you one.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, I gave everybody one this evening in the Center of Electronic Land.
She just keeps.
And the letter basically outlined, we had discussed some items regarding the cost sharing of the affordable units versus the market rate units. And originally, it was an even split, and it was the board's opinion that the affordable unit should pay a lesser amount. So we changed the language, item six in the draft agreement there that specifies that the affordable units will be paying a lesser condominium fee. And then the other issue that came up is that they wanted a provision on the protection of screening vegetation that we had earlier agreed upon, and that was added into the last line in here that's prohibited as well.
Excuse me, you didn't mean condominium.
Okay. One of the things we had asked for last time was screening and how you were gonna do the screening and how you were gonna.
No, it was nothing on how to screen. The screening's already approved. The little thing they asked for is protection that nobody could cut anything down that was in 10 feet of the buffer area.
Right, but that also those, that 10 feet would have to be mowed or whatever. I have a concern that if you have, this is gonna be right up against the border, okay, where the green area is, or the screening is, and that it was gonna be two 10-foot strips like the lots, one and two?
No, we've eliminated. The 10-foot strip still exists, but we're running the well lines through a access easement, so that area doesn't, the perimeter won't get touched.
I'm not sure what that means.
The wells are still in the place that they are, the houses are still in the place that they are, but the well lines are running further into the property, so they're not running along the outer edge of the property. So the 10-foot buffer, which is what we discussed last time, will not be disturbed. The 10-foot buffer will remain in place, the existing vegetation will remain in place.
Right, but to make sure that nobody, that nothing grows over that, you were gonna write something in that would require them to keep that mowed. We were concerned, well, I was concerned, I think some other members.
It actually ends up in everybody's yard where the mow, anyway, look, we can add the birch to that if we missed, if we missed that part.
Because it runs in back of somebody else's property, and they really don't have a right to mow it because it's not their property. The property belongs to, like, unit one, and then that 10-foot strip goes all the way back to the well that is theirs.
The 10-foot strip, they're not using a 10-foot strip anymore. They're accessing through, you wanna explain?
Yeah.
I get what you're, with the original concerns, if I can just address Ms. Roberts' question real quick. You're correct, it's a homeowner's association, not condominium association. But the original concern was, we had the well lines in close proximity to the previously approved screening buffer, and there was concern that that screening buffer would be damaged by the installation of the well lines. So we moved the well lines to be offset from that screening buffer, so that could be maintained as was originally approved. So there'll be a continuous minimum 10-foot strip around all the butter's properties of vegetation there. And then your concern, if I'm hearing correct, was that you were worried that things would grow on top of the well lines within the yard areas. I think it's unlikely, but we can certainly add language that each yard area needs to be perpetually maintained.
Yeah, just a warning to the, I mean, people who move out from the city think nothing.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And of the fact that there's a well line under there, and either the person who actually owns the property, or the person on whose property it is, are bugging that line. In other words, like four and five or something, that they wouldn't plant their rock. Does that make sense? And that somebody's gonna mow that, so that it, you won't have trees growing through the water line.
Yeah, that, again, the depth of the water line would preclude the trees from going in there, but we can certainly add.
Have you ever seen the roots of an oak tree?
Yeah.
Everything up there is shallow rooted, everything spreads across the surface 'cause they can't get the water. Everything is rooted in the topsoil.
But it's easy.
We can add the birches.
I think you started with the number two, the utility easement. We're actually just propose maintenance agreement.
Yeah.
Maybe right after.
We can add into that that areas that are yards shall be maintained as such, and designate yard areas that.
So, I'm just trying to envision this sort of, bear with me here as I'm asking this. Essentially, around the perimeter of this whole thing, it's gonna be your greenery and whatnot for shading from neighboring properties.
Yep.
Where is this easement in, is that like the next 10 feet in?
Yeah, or more. It varies throughout the site, but yes, so you'll have 10 feet of greenery, and then the easement extends past that.
But essentially, they're just not following the lot lines as far as the plumbing go. We're just going by easement instead of the lot line.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, if there was a municipal water system, I mean, you're gonna have lines coming in off the street that go through yard landscape area.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be the property that it's going through.
No, I mean, you can have utility easements that go across lot lines and in that scenario, too, but we're getting outside of that because you don't have any.
We've got a line of trees or shrubbery or whatever it is that's gonna be the screening, okay? And then, there's two 10-foot sections, are there not? One for each of the houses at the front?
It depends on the lot, but it can, we're going down the right. Yeah.
Okay, but that property actually belongs to these people back here, it's part of their lot.
Yep.
So I'd just like to make sure that the owners know, or someone's responsible for keeping that cleared, so an oak tree doesn't decide to pop up and go through somebody's pipe.
Yeah, that's no problem at all.
Because the lot by which it passes is not gonna wanna mow that, I mean, that's 20 more feet that isn't really their property.
Correct.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
They may even put a fence up.
Yeah.
Okay. We have engaged someone to do a peer review. The peer review won't be ready for 10 days to two weeks, we'll get you a copy of it when we get it. So I think if anyone has any questions, or anyone, anyone on the board have any questions? I think, yes, sir.
How'd you choose who was gonna do the peer review?
Excuse me?
How did you choose who was going to do?
It's someone that the town has used in the past, and it's someone the planning board uses on a regular basis. So we're aware of their work. Anything else? I think until we have the peer review, I'm not sure if there's anything else anyone wants to bring up. So if you could just resolve, yes, sir.
It wasn't the one that did the peer review last time, was it?
No.
No.
Is that a good thing?
That's a good thing.
Okay. But it has its limitations, because basically, they're looking at different things. No. So hopefully, even before the meeting, if we're in receipt of that report, we'll have Leanne send you a copy.
Can we get permission for a managing firm to have a back and forth with the peer reviewer, whether he consented with the peer reviewer prior and then?
Well, I have no, I mean, it's up to the peer reviewer. I mean, the peer reviewer, I would expect, will tend up to two meetings, and I would expect that they would probably be here. If you wish to contact them after you receive this for some reason, maybe answer some of their questions or whatever, that's between you and the peer reviewer.
Yeah, generally with the planning board, the peer reviewer gives us a list of his concerns, and then we work to answer the concerns prior.
I have no objection, but I'm not, I mean, it will be.
Amy said it was allowed, well, I just wanted to go on the record that it was okay.
You'll get a copy of the report, where it goes from there, they will be, I expect, at our next meeting.
Okay.
And if you choose to contact them in the meantime, and they're accommodating to it, that's fine with me. If not, you'll have a copy of the report, be able to look at it, and be prepared for the next meeting. Is that reasonable?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Is everybody available? The 11th of December. Yes, sir.
Just one more question.
Sure.
Would he be contacting the peer reviewer before the peer reviewer does the report?
No.
Okay, good.
He doesn't have anything to contact him about.
Well, okay, that should.
What he would be looking to do would be, if the peer reviewer raises questions, then if the peer reviewer is so inclined, he could discuss them directly with the petitioner. But they will be available at our December meeting to address any issues they have. But in fairness, giving them a copy of the report a couple of weeks in advance of.
I'm not against it, the only thing I was, wanted to make sure is that there's not too much interaction or any reaction, interaction until the report is written.
Correct.
Not, not to have influence before the report's written, that's all, just a clear report.
They will write a report, and it is customary that they write the report, and then the petitioner has the opportunity to question.
That's fine.
And all I'm saying is, it may be something that they can work on outside, now whether or not they bill for that, or what they, I don't know, because we will ask him to come to the meeting. Anybody have anything else?
I do.
Okay.
Seeing as this is a six acre lot, approximately, and quite a few homes, as I look at this map, and I see the lot line running behind, I'm gonna use an example, as Lot 1A. Now Lot 1A is going to have a strip that says 12 feet behind Lot 2 and Lot 3, then it's going to continue, and this, the owner of Lot 1 is going to have a piece of property directly behind Lot 3. Now, how would Lot 3 feel if this individual put a horse barn or chickens?
It doesn't work, you don't meet the offsets. Your offsets are 20 feet to sidelines, 40 feet to rear line, and 50 feet to front line.
What about a chicken coop? You cannot, we are a farming community.
I understand you're a farming community, we'll.
I wanna have chickens.
We'll outlaw chickens and we'll just.
Are you going to not allow free ranging chickens in Berlin?
Well, the difference from what I understand that would prevent that is, the person on the main lot does not own that land, so they couldn't put anything on that land.
Yet they're paying.
No, but the person put it down the street.
Yes, the person, the person who lives over in A, you know, they want to put a chicken coop over here at the plaza.
Or their kids' playground, or?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, something offensive, perhaps, to the neighbor at Lot 3 and 4, which would be in Lot 2, it's also very close.
In those strips that there's nothing allowed, because you guys are concerned about oak trees growing into well lines and stuff, and you're concerned about grass, and you're concerned about trees, so we could restrict those 10, those 10 or 12-foot strips that the.
Nothing can be restricted or planted, and it must remain mowed.
Yes.
It's not the strip that I'm discussing, I'm discussing, in order to make your lot, where the well goes, where, yeah, where the well is. There's a block of land there.
We can take care of it. Yeah, we can restrict that as well.
They can do restrict it.
That's a huge benefit to the butters, too, because it's gonna.
Be open.
What was a 10-foot strip is now gonna be a 50-plus foot area that's never gonna have any.
Yeah, and it is good, because it's only making these units more marketable.
But it has to state that, it must remain open.
It goes into the deed, it's a deed restriction, and it goes to the registered deed, and it gets recorded.
So you can show us that next time, right?
You'll add it to the covenant.
That nothing can be built on it, it must remain mowed, nothing can be planted.
What if, say, Lot 3, so Lot 3, which is in front of the back of Lot 1, what if Lot 3 has a dog with an invisible fence? I mean, and, and, so there's this, or Lot 1 has a dog, and they wanna put a dog kennel back there.
So there may, can be nothing, you're saying?
Yeah, so, I mean, 'cause it just looks so easy.
But grass, or.
On the strip, it's on by others. Not on the house.
Right limb, but if you look.
It looks like Lot 3 goes all the way back, but it doesn't, it belongs to Lot 1.
Lot 1, this is Lot 1, and you have your 12-foot strip, so Lot 1A owns this strip, and then goes behind the Minix, do you see that?
Yeah.
And it's almost as big as where.
Almost as big as the house. And it continues to the same thing. It jags, it goes behind the other properties, and that, same thing with 3. You see, which is behind 4.
Right.
Yeah, so a lot of these people are buying half acre lots, and will only be able to use half of that half acre.
Correct.
And some of that is even on the other side of the street.
On one of the other lanes, I think it shows these 10-foot strips.
Okay, this says 12.
It's still kind of, I mean, it's.
12.
It's being disclosed, it's kind of.
So they could fence them all off and keep them for themselves. Oh, well, I just wonder how the neighbors will all, they'll hate, get along, they'll hate each other.
We'll find out when they show up on our doorstep.
It just, it just could be a potential for problems in the neighborhood.
We're happy to add language that restricts the use of those areas.
Okay, so you can bring that next time, too, right?
No problem.
No problem.
I don't know, I mean, it just looks like everybody's here is gonna be doing something like that.
But you don't own it. Thanks, it's not yours.
Okay, is there another one of the plans that shows the well's actual location of the well that might explain that?
Sorry.
Is that the one that I was?
Here it is.
Oh, here it is.
This one, he got it.
Okay, now, just take a quick look at that and see if you have questions. You see, what I was talking about are these strips, okay?
Yes.
Because there's going to be screening from the neighbor.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be the two strips that belong to these people, okay?
Correct.
So you don't want this person encroaching on top of here, okay?
Yeah, right.
And the maintenance of this has to be defined. Who's gonna keep this clear of oak trees, do you know what I'm saying?
But, but they're not doing it inside the little strip anymore, so if you notice, it's an easement inside of, so Lot 3 has an easement for two water, two water points.
All the water lines owned by the property owner are on their easements involved.
The line itself is owned by the property owner.
But they're on easements that go over other people's properties.
Correct.
And under the road.
I don't think any of the water lines go under the road.
Yeah, no, they don't go under the road, but there's easements from the road coming.
Well, this is just an access, he told us last time.
Yeah, that was your concern of if maintenance ever needs to be done back there.
They needed to get a truck back there.
Yeah, to provide a piece of a way to get back there.
You know, if they had well problems, the pump died or something.
Yeah, but there's, there isn't any pipe that actually goes under the street, but what you are seeing, for example, Lot 2 has a pipe that comes across Lot 3, over to the rest of Lot 2.
Not really, because that land belongs to the lot.
No, it doesn't. Lot 2 is up here.
Could I trouble you to come over here for a second and, and course?
See, Lot 2 comes up here, and here's a lot line for Lot 2, but the well line for Lot 2 comes across Lot 1A with an easement, so it's in somebody else's property, and then comes back onto its own property back here.
I see, it's standard as an easement.
Yes.
And that was only out of your desire to preserve that 10-foot strip, so we were able to do that by adding these small easements to get the well lines to their wells.
Okay, so there'll have to be language that, on that easement property, who's responsible to keep it clear?
Sure.
Nothing seems to be a problem, that's wonderful.
No, I'm easy.
Okay. Is there anything else? Because we need copies of the language that you're gonna put in there, too. Okay? Is there anything else? I think our big meeting will be in time for Christmas, okay? And again, when we get the report from the peer review, we will share it with you. And then what you do with it is, okay, but I'm gonna ask if they can have a representative at our meeting to explain what they came up with, or didn't come up with, or, unless it's very clear that they have no issue. Okay? Anyone else? So we're looking at December 11th, I would take it at 7 o'clock.
So move.
So I'll make a motion, have, I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing until December 11th at 7 o'clock, that's good for you guys.
So move.
All those in favor, I? All those opposed? Is it something I said? Okay, how's school? Did you have anything to do with the little house?
No.
That's something, isn't it?
The name, the little house, the name of the bird? The name?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I go up there.
No, no, but it's in the cafeteria shop, right?
No, I knew that they were doing something with it. Yeah.
Well, I know, but supposedly, most of the shops were involved in it.
Yeah, like if you wanted to go up and.
They're doing, they're calling it a tiny house, it's not so tiny.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's 800 square feet, or a disabled veteran, I think it is, up in Maine. They got all donated materials and everything else, they built it in the shop, then prayed they could get it out of the shop.
800 square foot, yeah?
I think it's long. So, you know, they did all the plumbing and cafeteria and all of that stuff, and I guess there's a foundation up there, and they donated it to this individual. Okay. They're gonna have an open house, you should go criticize it. Okay, we're adjourned until December.
Okay, see you then. Have a good evening, thanks for your time.
Yes, you're sure. Um, we, just before you do, I'm gonna give it to you a little.
You're not shitting pretty regularly.
We can do some other things, but just to tell folks, I have a letter from Choate, and it's about Whitney Estates condominiums, affordable unit condominium fees. So Rebecca McDonald is back to want us, and I'll just read the first paragraph, and then it'll be here, I know Denny wants to look at it. "We represent Rebecca McDonald and owner yada yada at Whitney Estates, yada yada. Whitney Estates has unlawfully raised the condominium fees for affordable units. Ms. McDonald requests that the Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals amend the Whitney Estates comprehensive permit to correct a technical error that allegedly authorizes the fee increase."
This was all put to bed.
I, it never goes away.
How much do you have to spend on an attorney, in reference to how much your fees increase?
Depends, you know? You can go for consultation, and then they can tell you how much it would cost to fight it or something, you know?
This isn't, you can't do this, right?
Well, I'm gonna have to find out if they can request an opening up of the, it looks to me that they're asking to have the comprehensive permit opened up.
Which?
So I don't know if one member of the condominium association can do that.
And didn't that cost quite a bit?
It is on the second page. "Ms. McDonald has previously raised her sister the ZVA, which announced its intentions to amend the comprehensive permit. However, that amendment never took place. The ZVA has the power to remedy this injustice. The comprehensive permit vests the ZVA with the power to son or supa correct technical errors in that document without public hearing. Exhibit C at 176D, as such, the ZVA can amend the comprehensive to reduce the affordable unit owners condominium fees to 70 percent."
Well, I think that this is an Amy question, my feeling is, we can't unilaterally, I mean, we have to be referred from someone. And it's like being referred from someone up on the hill there, Sawyer Hill LLC.
Didn't Amy look at this, though?
Well, we discussed it before, and we thought it was all going to the state, and it was gonna be resolved there, okay?
So if they don't, they have to do the same, Sawyer's get the trustees to authorize it, and then they have to pay for the fee to open it.
But I'm wondering if this is a formal request. Now, we got it today, so it'll have to be stamped, but we only have, like, if we have to have a hearing, we only have like 20 days or something to open a hearing, or 30 days to open a hearing?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I can never remember.
Yeah. But on a 40B, it's very quick. I just need to know if they can request that, and if they can, then do we have to hear it, if one individual in the condominium association requests a revision?
Their letters seem to be pointing to a particular section in the comprehensive permit that says we don't have to have a hearing to make the technical correction, but who is determining that it is a technical correction and not a?
This is why I think it's an Amy question.
I agree, because I thought we already went over it, that we didn't know if this was a technical correction or not.
And the condominium association doesn't want it changed.
No, they don't.
Well, they, well, they're not exactly unbiased about that, but DHCD didn't really, they were kinda wishy-washy in their answer, they're saying, oh, you really shouldn't, but
I think we're gonna need legal counsel to tell us whether or not we're required to hold a hearing at the request of one member. If you remember. If you remember, like the Sawyer Hill LLC, it was the condominium association that needed to request a change.
Yes, but we, I'm thinking, we need Amy to say, yes, it is a technical correction, which I thought previously she couldn't determine that.
Well, all we can do is go by counsel. And I think what we need to do is even have Leanne, maybe not all the exhibits and everything, but scan the letter so that we can send it to Amy. And I'm gonna have to ask permission to have legal counsel take a look at it. So we probably will need to give Margaret a copy of this or make her aware of it. And just the fact that, I don't know what the answer is. Do you know what I mean? I don't know if one individual can just say, yeah, I wanna have a hearing on a technical amendment to the comprehensive permit.
But I also feel that, I mean, she does, she should have some sort of right to a hearing, because if you leave it up to the trustees, the trustees are gonna say, no, you can't, because obviously it's in their best interest not to have a hearing. So I'm not so sure it should be the trustees who get to decide whether to open it up or not.
Isn't, on that one, on the Whitney one, is she part of the board?
No, that's, no, that was Sawyer Hill.
No, no, on Whitney two, didn't they have to have a certain amount of representation on the board?
I don't know if they did, but there, but there is a separate agency that is, that is managing this condominium association.
Yeah, but she eventually had to have like a vote or something, I thought.
I think at one time she was on it.
Wasn't she on it?
Yeah, I think she, at one point, she was elected to the board. And then things went south and she got off with it.
And it's the other, there are, there were originally three units down there that were low moderate. We lost one of them.
Oh, okay.
And there's two, and the other person, I think, is on the board.
Oh, all right, so she represents the low.
Right, and she doesn't want any part of it.
Oh, okay.
So...
And just scanning quickly, it looks like the rates have gone, been going up.
Dramatically up.
They started at like two fifty and three fifty and now...
This was originally was lower, was it not?
Yes.
Yeah, it still is.
Oh, all right.
And now, I think, if I remember correctly, it's five hundred and she's paying three sixty.
Or was, but now they want the five hundred, and then at one point they wanted a reais.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, okay, let's run this up the flag roll with counsel and see where we go. Do you wanna do minutes or anything?
Amy didn't respond, so I would rather, she usually looks over the part, the section for the Cape's Berlin, and there was a lot last month, so I'd rather have Amy's eye on it first.
Okay, so we'll pass over that. Is there any other, again, I mentioned to Denny because he's doing like budget for us. There's a meeting tomorrow night on budget. I don't think it's gonna be, like, how much do you want? It's gonna be like, how much are we gonna give you? You know, what the parameters are?
How much are raised?
Everyone's welcome. Margaret also said that all members of any board can attend if they wish to without posting a meeting, because she seems to know that this is like, it would be like an office, town officers' meeting type thing. And it isn't covered under the requirement that we post a meeting if we are all attended. So if anyone wants to show up at seven o'clock tomorrow night?
Thank you.
That will be cool.
Okay, so on that, I submitted, Leanne's pay tonight for three thirty-six and some change.
Seventy-five.
And seventy cents. Signed, I signed it and sent it off.
Okay, we're, before tomorrow night, if you don't know right now, Jenny, where are we as far as our part-time budget?
Five thousand dollars left.
We've got what?
Twelve hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents left.
Okay, so we're gonna run out of money before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
Well, we've already expended how much this year?
Three thirty-six, two twenty-four, another three thirty-six, eighty-nine, so seven. We started with twenty-three hundred dollars, I think it was, twenty-two.
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 Twenty-two hundred dollars. We spent half of it.
Well, that would, let's see, July, August, September, October, November, December, so we're not too far off. We're not too far off.
If we keep having these big meetings, we will be.
But have you had...
There was one month where I, I only had four hours, because we had no hearings. But most of these months have been double hearings and then all this other stuff that comes in in between.
Now, do you pretty much put into that anything you do for the ZBA? Because originally it was combined with the inspector.
Right now, yeah, if I do something for ZBA, I'm logging it.
Make it separate, okay.
In July, she only had four hours, eighty-nine, eighty.
Yeah.
Jeanie Torbell, when I took the job, estimated that's ten hours a month on average. And that's what it's coming, you have the month where it's only four hours, and then there's a month where there's fifteen hours. So I think ten hours a month is fairly accurate.
So the budget should probably cover it?
Yeah, we're probably gonna have a couple months where it's not this crazy.
Oh, you optimist, you.
Praying.
Seems like we're doing more and more and more and more.
Okay, so if we do like a level funding thing, there's another issue as to whether or not... Well, we can talk about that later.
We gotta do a, they'll give us, tell us how much percentage raise it'll be.
I think it's one point five percent this year.
Oh.
I've read that somewhere.
What are you gonna do with all that money?
I'm taking a fabulous vacation.
You had one of those last year, or this year?
I did.
That's something else to take into consideration. You probably want maybe a two percent increase?
Yeah, just because of the...
Because of the anticipated, yeah. Okay. So, you're doing budget, right?
I'll try.
Okay. Nobody seems to be interested in...
Barry.
I'm out to lunch on that twenty, on November twenty-second, huh? I'm out to lunch on November twenty-second, it was already, or it's tomorrow night?
I didn't see twenty-second, I see tomorrow night only, but either way, I'm not...
Yeah, and I can't do tomorrow.
Why can't you be two places at once?
Because I don't have two heads. Okay, if we have nothing else to discuss, do you wanna take a break for fifteen minutes?
I just have one thing I wanted to mention real quick. Couple of months ago, I, we'd brought up contacting the citizen planner, training collaborative folks, and trying to get transcripts of who's been to what seminars and whatever. And I've gotten absolutely nowhere with them. So I talked to the town manager about three weeks ago and asked her if she could possibly contact them on our behalf and kinda use her horsepower as the town manager to hopefully get a, some sort of response out of that. She sent them an email requesting basically the same information about a week and a half ago. And I haven't seen a response to that yet, but she's working at this point trying to get us some kind of an answer out of them. And I kinda explained to her that that affects our, the town's insurance rates and, yeah. So that kinda got her interested. She's trying to find a, find a way to save a few bucks, so... So she's working that. I don't know if we'll still get an answer or not finally out of them. They don't seem to wanna cooperate with anybody.
It's a full moon out there, woo-hoo!
Jim, this was, we said to get, find out credits for classes attended, is that what?
Yeah.
The two of them.
Yeah, I was expecting that.
She's wearing a condominium truck.
Yep, she's been in the office.
I have to back in seconds and...
There's a letter from DEP.
Oh, do we have an update to the DEP about their water?
If it's in there.
There's a letter from Environmental Protection on the next page. So...
Oh, yeah.
Let me get my book out and see what the rule is about holding a hearing for. I honestly think it's twenty days.
Even, you said, it just came in?
Yep, they just filed it.
Filed it today? Okay, I don't have that book with, anybody out there, chapter forty A?
Forty-eight or forty-four.
Forty-B.
Thanks. I had a pile on the kitchen table, but... Okay, I suppose the index would be most helpful, we've got reviews, it takes us a... Forza appeal, stupid, I think, special permits, adult bookstores.
Yeah, sure, we can just file a special department to get our apartment back. The comprehensive permit has to be amended first. And then she said, well, that'll be, she said, we'll do that after, we can't do that now.
What would it be on, because this is on a notice requirement, okay, seventeen might be in the... Because all I'd be looking for is a date from you folks.
Don't you want forty-B, not forty-A?
Oh, it's E, right? I'm looking for something that doesn't exist in here. Okay, we'll go online and look it up. There you go. There's a reason you're...
Comprehensive permit timeline, it shouldn't matter whether it's... Comprehensive permit to comprehensive permit, right?
No, they're very specific as to how long you have to...
Open hearing, and I think it's less time than...
Yep.
So what was the, the original bid number count was one fifty-eight? Is that correct? Yeah, one fifty-six, one fifty-eight, right around there. Okay, because they're asking, because it's moved up to one fifty-nine. Yeah, increasing by...
Not including all the other ones?
No, yeah, all the other apartments that happened.
Okay, this doesn't have the signature of the town clerk. And this... It says they filed it the town clerk on the thirteenth, but they signed it on the twelfth. Now, Amy was involved in this one the last time, right?
Yeah.
Is she looking to do both?
No, she's looking...
Right now, this is just to amend the comprehensive permit. She did wanna do both simultaneous, simultaneously, but the building inspector and myself advised her not to.
Did she want to do what?
She also wanted to simultaneously apply for a special permit for the accessory apartment in conjunction with this.
Oh.
So after they get this, they'll be coming in for that?
Yes. Because Richard said if they grant it simultaneously, you'd have to open the hearing. And if you didn't have the means by which to grant them a permit, because this wasn't resolved, you'd get denied, and they can't be applied for two years.
Even better.
So I think...
This is, most of this is all about the original.
This is the same thing, the difference is, they now have a letter from DEP.
Yeah, they updated the, the search.
What's the figure? The DEP gave them.
They actually didn't put any numbers related. I'll have to go pull my old paperwork.
Well, I know what was in the original, okay?
Yeah, I do too.
But I don't know what this means, we'll have to read through what it says. Application for a new permit. Okay, if I issues the following permit.
So deadline, seven days to distribute to other boards, fourteen days to publish the public hearing. Fourteen days before the public hearing.
Who's gonna like the other one, or I could...
No later than twenty days from the date the decision is...
What's the twenty-day thing?
No later than twenty days from the date the decision is filed with the city or town clerk.
That's the decision. I put the book in my...
Well, this is the book, I just can't read without my reading glasses.
My, you see, if I just go get my book.
Maybe I have better glasses. Those are the critical dates.
Right. I'm not sure this is about what they were supposed to do from the get-go.
Okay, it's the open the public hearing, no later than thirty days from the date on which the comprehensive permit application is received by the ZBA.
That would be today.
Okay, there you go.
It's number thirty right there.
They can show up next month, the same time as the other day.
Thirty days has November. Right? So we're at the thirteenth, and we're meeting on the eleventh, so it would be possible to do it on the eleventh.
Yeah, it would be twenty-eight days, anyway, right now.
And that means that we have to, in order to do two weeks of notice, we would have to have something on the twentieth to give them, which is next week.
Critical deadlines, day sixteen.
Thank you. Yeah, that's his thirty. No later than thirty days from the receipt of the applicant's appeal, DHCD must make a determination after payment.
Don't, okay.
Okay, no later than seven days from the date on which the comprehensive permit application is received by the ZBA. Distribute the application to other boards and municipal apartments and request their comments. Fourteen days before the public hearing, no later than thirty days from the, okay. No later than thirty days from the date on which the comprehensive permit application is received by the ZBA. It says open public hearing. So it will be, okay?
So now we're gonna have...
Pass this down before it confiscated.
So then they have to notify whom they have to notify?
So we have to back that up. So I would say next week, we would have to have an answer for it. And I think what I'll do is... Amy?
Hope she's not taking any winter trips.
I guess I'm curious who signed this. So, because it's Maki, is the email contact?
Virginia Matthews, um...
Is the individual?
She's the individual, she's also on the condo association.
Yes, she's, excuse herself on something.
Okay, so she says, see letter. Okay, so that must mean that she's got a letter from some kind of a vote, okay? So we'll have to set this up. And I must have one from before in my file, when we did this before for them.
We've got the letter in here from back in April with all the board members' signatures.
Right, what they were lacking was...
I think they still are.
Well, right after the second page is the DEP letter. But I don't see where it says... It doesn't say what it's allowing.
No.
Well, that's why I was asking, what is the number of current bedroom units? Because authority for issuance totaling one hundred fifty-nine bedrooms.
Yeah, it was like a hundred and seventy-eight, I think, something along that, those lines. It was a specific number in the comprehensive permit.
Yes.
But I don't see what the limit is in here from D E P.
What was the original limit?
It was, I don't know the exact number. We'd have to look at the paperwork again.
It's in here.
Is it?
Because the new permit is, this letter from D E P is saying that they're off, they're, they got it up to one hundred fifty-nine. I don't, it seems to me that's what it was originally.
That's what I'm asking. What was the original number? Was it one fifty-eight or one fifty-nine?
Well, it's.
We wanted to go by one.
You still have all that stuff you've done off of the internet, right?
No, I saved everything too.
Did you?
Because I talked to a guy at D E P too. I saved all that stuff.
Okay. You could just take a look if you would, it's.
Well, technically, it's saying that it serves one hundred and fifty-nine bedrooms.
Correct.
It's saying they're authorizing.
Unfortunately, the last one too, they, they were not in compliance with the amount of bedrooms they had at the time.
No, that's not really what it says.
No, no, this one doesn't. But originally, part of the problem was they weren't even that compliant with the ones they had last time.
Exactly.
Well, it says the treatment plant serves two adjacent clustered communities, Kimlock and Moser, of thirty-four condominium units each totaling one hundred and fifty-nine.
Right, but that's what it currently serves.
So it would be increased to one sixty.
But there's nothing to say they can increase it. D E P isn't saying you can increase it to one sixty. They're just saying, yep, you're in compliance at one fifty-nine.
Yeah.
All right, so on the original comprehensive permit, on page seven of that permit, what was approved originally was one hundred and fifty-eight.
Oh, all right.
So the D E P is now saying that they've upped it to one hundred and fifty-nine. So they've added one bedroom.
She's going through all of this together.
I know, and she's been down hot.
She just went through the process of removing the stove and returning it from an apartment. To now do.
Well, I leave the number two.
So they're only upping it one?
What about hub grub? Everybody else has gone out for their food.
Yeah, and that's all they're asking for on the face sheet too.
And the additional price beyond the sixty.
It sounds like a fun place, doesn't it?
So we got to ask something from D E P saying that they say yes. It's okay, and from the board of health.
Okay, well, this is gonna make a good night read.
Oh, speaking of which, I can see my new neighbor. I would leave to comment.
Oh, really? But in the petition, they're only asking. Correct.
I'm not, I'm not fine for it. So it's one hundred fifty-eight, but somebody do.
I will. Here it says one fifty-nine total, page seven.
So much for the break.
Again.
But that's the new one. It's amazing.
Correct.
Page, did you say the number was on on the original comprehensive permit?
Page seven, it's under the heading of housing, it's in paragraph one.
That'll be fun next one. Yeah, holidays are coming.
Why don't you show up a couple of.
The Grinch is gonna show up.
Just show up every couple of months, an hour or two.
That's what we used to do. It wasn't nicer.
Wait, are you, I'm sorry. Are you looking at the declaration of trust, or are you looking at something else?
Okay, folks, I think it's eight o'clock.
All right, to be continued.
Eight o'clock.
We'll play with the next one.
And I'll open the hearing.
We got the Thea Butter's list.
Oh, okay. Do you have Thea Butter's list in the newspapers? Down the end there, please.
So newspapers have to begin between ten sixteen and ten thirty. Well, I gotta find out.
Now I can get off the forty-eight. Let me borrow. Virginia's forty-eight. I even know the section on this.
I know.
Wednesday, November sixth.
I have glasses animated by this.
Okay, and then we need one between October sixteenth and October thirtieth, which is this one.
Yep.
And Thea Butter's list went out on October twenty-fifth, so we're good. We're all settling.
Okay. Gonna open the hearing for Five Randall Road, request of a variance. This is from, this is under forty-eight, section ten. And it's asking for relief from our Article Six Density and Dimensional Regulations, Section six twenty Table of Regulations, and Section six fifty Setback Regulations, subsection six fifty-one Corner Lots. And I will notify everyone that open session public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded, not only could be recorded, but will be recorded. Would you pass this down before it ends up in my bag?
There you go.
Okay, and you are?
Matt Restekey.
Okay, I, because I just saw who's gonna represent, and I didn't know if that was you or. And you received a copy of chapter forty-eight, section ten?
Yes.
And you understand what criteria you must meet in order for us to grant a variance?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we, what you explain to us?
Sure. So we're hoping to put a pool on the property. Because of the wetlands restrictions behind the house, there is only really one spot that the pool could go, which is on the side of the house. The building inspector told us we need a variance because the corner lot requirements require fifty feet off the street. We would need ten feet of relief in order to put the pool in on the side of the house.
When you say putting the pool in on the side of the house, do you mean fencing and decking? I mean, what's, when you say forty feet, it's, it's gonna be forty feet from any construction, right?
Forty feet is to the hole in the ground, right?
So, um, the contractor, McCarthy Pools. I think in, in Berlin, at least according to the building inspector, the, the setback requirement is to the water's edge of the pool. So the fence, some decking would be.
Permissible?
Yeah.
Be outside, or even closer to the street is what you're saying, so.
Yeah.
To how much closer? Do we know how big your deck's gonna be in your fence?
I think it's proposed right there. I, I don't know what the, it looks as if it's probably at least thirty feet away from the, from the property line.
From the street?
The property line. The, the street is probably six or seven feet further from his lawn.
Okay, you're showing forty-four feet from the edge of the pool, is that it?
And I think that's.
It's actually like, but he put forty-four on the line.
Is that because the pool got bigger, or the?
No. It was a typo on the, he fixed it after I submitted it, so. Everything should be identical except that.
But physically Highland Street is beyond this property line?
Yeah, that's.
So the pavement is?
Is beyond it. It's probably six or seven feet.
Okay.
Just for those of you that may not be familiar, we have a interesting bylaw that deals with corner lots. And it basically says that if you have a corner lot, both streets are considered frontage. So rather than having the side yard requirement in their side yard, they have, the bylaw requires that they meet the front setback, which would be fifty feet.
That's actually a pretty common bylaw.
Yeah.
Right, right. Okay, can you explain to us better where, I see it an indication of where the wetland is? So is there any reason that the pool couldn't go on the other side of the house?
There's not a, so the other side of the house is a pretty steep hill based on the grading. And, uh, let's see, there's a twenty-five foot notice served zone on the wetlands as well. So that's why we sort of had to push it up to the side of the house as opposed to go hindwards.
Look, besides which your well is there.
Correct, yes, the other side, that's right.
Well, this is what I'm looking at that would be a possibility. Would be on the other side of the house. See, what we have to do, they try to be a little strict about this, but we have to show that.
We actually looked to put it there initially, but based on where the property line is, the well and the twenty-five foot buffer on the wetlands, that was not a possibility, which is why we went to the other side of the house.
Are you talking like where the existing deck is, that area right there?
She was, she was asking.
Over here? Okay, and again, you have an existing deck there, right?
Correct.
It says existing wall to be removed.
There's a small, like a knee wall.
Oh, okay. But the pool is going there, so why can't the pool go there?
Uh, it would not meet the offset requirement.
He said the offset for the wetland was?
Twenty-five foot.
That's not set. Twenty-five foot line is not on this plan.
No, it isn't. So it's kind of hard to see dimensionally how far it actually comes back.
Based on the wetlands, it almost prohibits a pool, it does prohibit a pool going behind the house. That's why it's sort of, it's gonna have to push up.
It's gonna be a real high charge. This is the wetlands.
You have, you have the wetlands outlined here.
Yeah, because I've got a wetland.
Maybe saying there's another twenty-five foot sucker.
Right there. And I'm just saying, okay.
Every inch is.
Is this, if this is the wetland, is this the twenty-five foot line, is that what you're saying? It looks like this is the twenty-five foot line.
Yeah, the broken line. Yeah.
Part of, part of an issue with, with the construction of an in-ground swimming pool in the backyard is also the water table. Everything, the wetlands right there.
So it drains into that area?
He's got existing lawn that, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's wet probably.
Did the conservation commission say?
So they, I think the, the, the plan was to, to hopefully get approval from the Z B A prior to going to the conservation. So it hasn't been approved from, I mean, the plan complies to the twenty-five foot.
They've, they've been out there, seen it, but we've not gone to them.
The paperwork's ready to go on that.
Want to shed in that twenty-third.
Yeah, but see, that, that can be a double-edged sword for you. Because we could approve it subject to. But if you have to move it, you gotta come back.
Can you, can you explain why it's not going on the northwest side of the house? On the sort of west side of the existing wall and well? Why, why it doesn't fit over here?
So based on where the well was and property, so this, first of all, this is a real steep hill that comes down here.
But not up here, it's not, this is, this is relatively flat. That's why you have this existing wall.
This wall is holding back, so the driveway is right here.
Yeah.
It, it slopes down from the driveway to that wall, and then it really dropped, it drops down completely to the other side.
This whole side of the property is sort of like a hill that slopes down.
No.
But you're only looking to carve out a certain, we have to be assured that there is no place else on the lot this could go in order to grant a variance from the front yard requirement. So I think there is a section over here that's quote questionable. And the only thing, you don't have any pictures or anything of the slope or.
There was, there was some contour on the plan somewhere in here as well.
Oh, was there a contour? Did any of this came as?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. So this is, this is relatively flatter than where you're proposing the pool.
No.
You see here, here's your existing contour line. See how close together they are? That's pretty steep right there. Which is, which is about the same amount as.
This section here is pretty flat. The, there's a slope that goes from the front yard and the back of the. The, the basement is walkout basement. This is set probably ten, twelve feet up from the property. So we've got to put a retaining wall here. This section is relatively flat today. This is a hill that slopes down.
But what I'm saying is, see your existing contour lines? Right here, first in gray. These are closer together than these contour lines over here.
You wanna call it, you, you know how flat the area is.
I don't know. It's not that different.
It's not, it's not.
I can't know my life, but I can tell you it's, this is a pretty dramatic little here, compared to the side of the house.
I'm sure it feels that way, but I'm just saying what's, was drawn here is not indicating that this is any.
I mean, if there was a footprint to do something on that side that you're talking about, if, does any part of it come into, you know, it's sixty feet away from the house. Obviously, it's in the main drag. It might not be as obviously desirable as keeping it close to the side of the house. I think that might be part of it. I mean, physically, could you put a swimming pool on that left side? Maybe make it smaller, maybe big, build walls, I don't know.
What size is the pool? Dimensions?
It's sixteen feet by thirty-six feet.
Not exactly huge.
No. But I mean, but my, even so, on either side of the house, though, they're within that, that wetlands line.
You said sixteen by thirty-two?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
I don't know. I, conservation has been picky. I would rather see what they say first.
Yeah, just for your edification in the future, it would have been really wise to go to conservation and have them say that this is the spot for it, if that makes sense to you.
So I've, I've had, actually Caroline and Walter came out to the property and, and took, they actually walked the property and saw the spot where it's going to go. But we were counseled to come to you guys first to get the offset requirements before we went to conservation, so.
I, I don't understand that.
We were, without the, without the Z B A variance, they had told us to come to you guys first to get the variance before we went to conservation, so that's, that's the process.
That was conservation that told you that?
Yeah, that was the education.
Because I'm, one of our main concerns is the conservation land and, you know, what they consider the buffer and everything. And we really need that in order to be able to write up a variance. And we really need that in order to be able to write up a variance.
They know that, we could, we're not allowed to offer variance if, if they're not putting a letter to us saying that it can't be over there, so, I mean, that's interesting that they told you.
Well, my other concern is, I think conservation could get involved in the putting of it on the other side of the house, because there is room over there to put it. And technically, we have to show that there's basically no place else to put it.
That's section ten, have to read that very, 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 very carefully and look at the reasons, and you have to be able to state to us under those reasons why you can't do it. And there are little things.
It says, we as such permit granting authority specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Well, that last piece is relatively easy because you're a corner lot and there's not too many of those. But we have to find, um, that there are special circumstances to this lot relating to soil conditions, shape, topography, um. And the best thing would be is if conservation said, no, they can't do this, no, they can't do that, because there is a spot on the other side of the house where it could go.
But the topography doesn't allow for it to go on that side, so.
Okay, so.
But even so, we're still within that wetlands buffer zone, a hundred foot setback. And if you remember, a couple months ago, they didn't even want a shed in that buffer zone. So I would, I would feel better having a letter from them saying that it's okay to put the pool in there.
If they consider this the most desirable location and you'd be in like Flynn.
Okay.
Because they would be much more in tune with the topography of the land, too. And some pictures would help.
And at least you're not going swimming next month, right?
Yeah, I mean, typically, they're gonna approve a proposed plan done, you know, that we, that we have, I think that's typically the, the process, I mean, as far as a, a, a number of potential location or something smaller or something, do they get into that or is it more so that we're gonna approach them with the plan and if they say yes, if it, this, this works?
No, you need to approach them and say that you met with us and our concern was whether or not, number one, that your proposal location meets wetlands. And because of the topography of the, um, lot, there is no other place it could be, okay? This is their preferred location. Um, I mean, just looking at what you've supplied us with, as the one who needs to end up writing this up, I would be uncomfortable saying that there's no place else on the lot that it could be. I mean, what we usually assume is people have a right. What size lot is this?
Uh, eighty thousand square feet.
Roughly two acres.
Two builders acres.
Um, two acres?
Two builders acres.
Forty, twenty.
Four point eight.
Two.
Four point eight.
So I know that half of that land appears to not be buildable because of the wetlands, okay? But there is a spot over by the existing well, between the existing well and the existing house, that it appears, um, that a pool could be placed.
So can I, given that that side is a topography issue, not a wetlands issue, how, like, 'cause I don't think conservation is gonna comment on the topography there, are they?
No, they're gonna comment on the fact that it's within the one hundred foot buffer zone.
Correct. Which is obviously why we have to go to them for approval.
Right, but if you're showing, see, your, your argument that the other side is steeper doesn't really hold water because you're showing a retaining wall to hold back part of your, the front of your house, uh, front of your yard. So the same question is, why can't you build the same type of retaining wall on the other side of the house to make a flat area?
There is a retaining wall on the other side, but I'm happy to show you pictures if that's easy, I don't know.
No, well, I mean, I think, well, I, I know what the street side.
We wanna see you put the pool in, we're not trying to be obstructionist, but in all fairness, this map has no validity from the conservation commission. It marks off wetlands. Now, by wetlands, do they mean the actual wetlands and you can't build within a hundred feet of that? Because it's, you know, you're not supposed to build a structure or anything within a hundred feet of the wetlands.
There's a twenty-five foot no disturb zone off the wetlands, we are with, we are outside of that, we are within the one hundred, our house is within the one hundred foot.
Uh, yes, I know, and the one that we saw a couple months ago, the entire house was within the buffer zone, but they did not want the shed within the buffer zone, so that's why we're saying, go to them, like, see what they give you for options, because otherwise we're just gonna have to say subject to them and then you're gonna have to come back to us anyways.
Okay.
Just so I understand the process, we go to conservation, we have to go through this process again with the ads and all of that?
No.
No, continue.
That was not a cheap process.
It gets continued.
We can continue in here.
And having pictures and, uh, more information to back up.
Right. What, what, and just not to leave you lead to astray, you know what we're looking for, right? We're looking for a couple things, number one, we're looking for the conservation commission to say that this map reasonably represents the conditions that exist. That you can't, in other words, you've got a line here wetlands, it wasn't drawn by the conservation commission. Believe it or not, wet line, wet land lines change over time. They go out and they find some vegetation, that's considered wetland vegetation. This map was done recently.
Yeah.
Um, the next thing is?
And, and a wetlands consultant was involved in that process, just.
Yours or the one from the town?
Uh, he represented us for work. Yeah, it was, it was, uh, someone that, that Matt hired. To delay the wetlands and actually take it to the conservation. I had to redo the retaining wall on the other side of the house a couple months ago, so we had to go through this whole process with conservation and we had a wetlands consultant involved.
And the retaining wall is there because?
Because of the slope. The driveway, yeah, because of the slope.
Okay.
That's the one on the north side.
And I would like.
And for your, as you live at the front of the house?
Yes.
Just looking at this map without any backup, I think we'd have to say that there's another place where the pool could go. We understand you have information that you shared with us, we just need to see it in writing from the conservation commission. If they have a problem with that, tell them to call me, okay? That we need to know where the wetlands line is and where the wetlands buffer line is. We need some kind of verification that the slope and grade, because that's specifically mentioned in the, um. The topography, shape, soil conditions, so the topography enters into it. So if you were to come in and, might I suggest you write it down and say, you know, twenty feet out from the house is a four-foot drop and then there's, it grades down at a whatever grade, um, down to the lot line. That would be super, because that would mean you don't have a plateau where you can build anything. I mean, I personally don't see any problem, but we need to meet the guidelines that are in here. It also requires, um, would involve, in other words, for us to stick to the bylaw, it would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance. So I think we all agree, not that having a pool is a right, but that the fact that you have two acres of land and have no place, you know, if you were on an eighth of an acre and came in, we could say, well, hmm, you know, there's just not enough room, there's not enough, uh, your water isn't big enough. But the substantial hardship is that a great deal of it is wetlands, and there is only one place on here that appears to be an alternative. And we just need to be able to show that that's not the alternative. Like, if it were tonight, um, that may, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but that would be a consideration in voting. So the one thing that we can do is if you would like to request a one-month continuation, you do not have to re-notify anybody, okay? You just have to show up. And if you would like to request, um, that we give you a month's, um, continuation, then if you just came back with that other stuff, if you met with conservation, have Walter call me and I'll, I'll tell him we need this, um, in order to meet the requirements, apply aid. And if you could do a little write-up as to the slope of the land on the other side, why it's not possible to put it, the only other reasonable place it appears to be on the lot.
Couple of pictures.
Yeah, and pictures are beautiful. You know, for us to be able to visualize exactly what's happening.
Road trip.
And, um. I see you're putting a retaining wall near the pool, too. Is that because of the topography on the other side?
There's a, there's a park mulch slope that goes down to the section where we're putting in the pool, but because we've had to move the pool further away from the wetlands, we're going into the, that sort of. And the wall may not be necessary, but it's shown on the plan, we may be able to grade it off without doing a wall.
What's on there you can build, what isn't on there you can't.
Exactly.
Um, and you're gonna put a fence around the pool, I take it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I would like to see where the fence is gonna go and how far that is from the street. See, this doesn't, I mean, it, obviously your neighbors aren't up in arms, or they would be here or would have contacted us. But anyone else have any other thoughts?
How far do you wanna see, I mean, is there a, a distance, I mean, I don't even know what the, we were gonna keep the fence fairly close to the patio, I think.
It looks like you got a line, right?
Yeah, that, that might be the patio line, I think, the, the, the shape of the, of the concrete patio.
And then the fence will go beyond that.
Would the, would the, would you like to see it closer to the pool than further away?
I mean, the spirit on the next.
Personally, no, I think what we're most concerned with is it being located here.
Yeah.
Forty to fifty feet is ten feet. It doesn't seem to be, um, a problem, obviously the neighbors haven't showed up, but it doesn't seem to be a problem because it's the street.
Yeah.
Okay? And obviously you'd want a fence for two reasons, number one, for an in-the-ground pool, you have to have one. And the, the, uh, second reason is you don't want people riding by waving to you as you're getting your suntan.
Uh-huh. Are there any trees along Highland Street?
Uh, there's a couple of mature trees further down, they're not really.
So that doesn't give you any buffer?
Uh, no.
It's the big yellow house.
Yeah, I know. I just couldn't remember if there were trees there.
No, but I, the, one thing I would request, even if it's only on eight and a half by eleven, but just a blow up of that area, just so we can see it all the better.
I have, do you, you wanna?
We can Google it.
Yeah, no, I meant with the, with the dimensions.
I have a full, I have a full.
Do you just, do you need this or can we keep it?
I can.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Oh, here we are.
Look at those.
Even holding out on us. Oh, now I grabbed it away from you.
You've got the wetlands line on the map there, I think it would be helpful.
Funny, 'cause this.
I have the wetlands map, the topography, when I have that size two in the car, if you guys want us to do that. Well, it's.
But it's also done by somebody else.
It would be helpful if you drew in the twenty-five foot buffer. Yeah, it's on, it's on the other version of the, the map of the conservation. That's land that we have to kinda exclude from any consideration, so when we're looking at where you can't go in.
If you took out the concrete patio.
Yeah, I know.
You'd be fine, right against the house.
Well, yeah.
I think you could do that, I don't think you have the pool.
The only reason. The only reason I ask that they show the fence on it is, you know, or just write fence in there or whatever it is, because that can be considered a structure. Okay? And that may reduce the forty feet, um, to something less than forty feet. And if we write it up as forty feet and it ends up being interpreted by the building inspector as.
Yeah, the, the fence, I don't know what the break, but, but the fence can go a lot closer, I don't know if it has to be two feet from the property line or a foot.
I'm not as concerned how close to the property line you are as I am in writing up a decision, um, that has to show that there's no place else it could go.
Sure.
Also, when you said you're going out for the wetlands, are all the wetland lines that you're talking about, like on the wetlands, it looks like the same thing, are the ones that your consultant did, they're not the ones from our conservation commission?
So they, they are the ones that the conservation commission did when the house was built.
Oh, okay.
Re-verify by our consultant when this retaining wall.
Yeah, although this is over here others, okay.
In fact, the original plans of the house are on this, is the line.
Okay, that, that is the same.
Yeah, so conservation's gonna wanna see this, they're gonna wanna see the twenty-five and they're gonna wanna see the hundred.
Which I have, that's.
I don't think we're as concerned.
This one, this one doesn't have it.
No, no, that's.
As to whether it's forty feet or thirty-five feet. I think what we're concerned is making sure we put down something that can be lived with. So that's, after you leave us, the building inspector says the fence is only thirty-five feet and they gave you a variance for, um, forty feet, and then there's some kind of an issue there. So I think it would be well to have a dimension on there that shows the fence.
But ten feet to go up to the property line, speaking as a tiny community.
Ten feet.
It used to be a thirty. Oh, I love big fence.
Mmm.
So it would be good to have it.
This is the line represented, the other one.
Twenty-five.
So it would be good also for you to have an argument as to why it's financially acceptable to put a retaining wall to flatten out this area, but not a retaining wall here to flatten out this area, because.
There is a retaining wall, that line is a retaining wall.
Right, but you, but what I'm saying is an argument of why they can't move this, this retaining wall.
Over to the other side, yeah.
Put the pool over here, is if that's a financial hardship, you know, somebody should be saying that.
The pictures would help, if this is the driveway, this is literally, this to the retaining wall is like this, right? Um, and this was just rebuilt, this is, this would be like a, probably a two-foot knee wall because we're backing up into the hillside, but.
Oh, this line issues the driveway?
No, this is sixty, you've got six feet here, this is, this is the four thirty-two and this is four thirty-eight, so that it's six foot difference from here to here in, in height. But I'm not, I'm not saying you have to do it, I'm just saying, I, I would wanna hear an argument as to why this is financially acceptable, but it's a financial hardship on that side, that's what I'm asking for.
Where would you put, this is the driveway.
Is this your garage here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree, I wouldn't want it there.
But, but I'm saying, it could fit over here, that's what we're asking for. I, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, have a good argument.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I just, if you could see this.
Well, if he chooses.
Fifteen foot, fifteen foot retaining wall.
Financial hardship.
Yeah.
You might wanna, on your search system, your expansion area.
Which is this?
Well, this is a search system over here.
Right.
Right.
If that one fails, where are they gonna put it?
Oh. Well, it's fairly new.
I, I, I think it's designed up there as well. I, I don't, I don't have, I think we saw a proposed plan of the septic.
How old is the house?
If that's true, then there is a system.
Is it?
Is within the step backs.
Pretty much.
So they, they can't, they can't put a re, they can't put a replacement system over there because it would be within the 50 footsteps of that.
Right. Where would they put it?
Well, I think a picture's worth a thousand words and I think that if we were to have pictures of the slope, that we would be able to say, it could be filed with it in our folder.
Away from the wetlands, and it's not this.
No comments, guys?
I got mine. I just wanna see that 25-foot buffer is online.
Yeah, right over here.
As long as it's there. I mean, I think we need all this on one drawing, so that we can basically, this is the, the overall lot and this is all the areas that we're excluding, and this is what's left.
And it is, I mean, this, it is all on this drawing, but I do, that one is blown up so that you could...
I think this is Mulberry, not Molly.
Wetlands line.
Mul, Mulberry's up there.
Yeah.
Just, just, isn't she in a bar there?
She's a nice gal.
Oh, anyone else want to see this before I roll it up?
Well, I mean, theoretically.
What you have here?
Well, yeah.
So he's saying the slopes over there, because that was my original...
So this one had the, the 25-foot line, and this one has the, the setbacks from the roads drawn on.
How creative are these?
My next one's saying, if we can get them all in one drawing. Basically, I wanna, I'd like to eliminate all the areas that can't be used on one drawing, because we're gonna have to attach that drawing to our justification.
And I think I would mark this as the garage. Because, you know, one could say, well, you can move that driveway, okay? That, you know, that shouldn't be, but the fact that this, I'm assuming... Here to here is the entrance to your garage. Is it nine? What do you have, a double garage or something? Three cars. So I think my, you know, marking this as a garage means that you've gotta have something leading up to the garage.
Oh, she is, um, next to, most next to.
But see, this is...
And what's her name? What, are we at the hound stair?
Have we confused you terribly? If not, let's try to. We, we can vote on this tonight, okay, if you want us to do so. Or if you wanted to request a continuance until December, if you feel confident what you think you need to supply for us. So that you don't come in and say, well, I didn't know you wanted that. Do you need?
Uh, yes.
So what is your pleasure?
Patrick says continuance, so I'm gonna go with the pressure.
Good advice.
So what...
Good advice, yeah.
So what are we suggesting, or what is it your understanding that we're asking you to do?
So I know you want me to go to Conservation next. The one question I have is if this is continued to the 13th. I don't know that I'm gonna get before Conservation. I'm not sure what those, the dates are for Conservation, but...
They meet twice a month, typically every two weeks.
Yeah, and they should, you know, to one.
We have to go through a similar process.
You like to go to Conservation.
I love Conservation.
Okay, so it's not the, it's not the approval meeting necessarily?
What I, what I would suggest is, we can't go en masse to the Conservation Commission because that would be an illegal meeting. But one of our members has been kind enough in the past to attend Conservation meetings. And he could probably, if they have questions as to exactly what do you want from us type thing. Would you be willing to do that?
Uh, if I'm here, the, I'm about to go on a little vacation, so I'm not sure. I think they're meeting next Wednesday and then I can do it next Wednesday. And I'll certainly reach out to them ahead of time. Actually, we're, we're trimming trails this weekend, so I can ask them on the trimming trail unofficially. I realize it must be frustrating. We have to, we, we get lots of similar things. We have to be consistent with everybody or then there are people coming back and say, why'd you do it with them? No, totally. So we're just, um, that's what surprises me. We, we actually engage with them pretty frequently on this type of thing and there's a standard, you know, protocol that we follow. So if you've met with Walter and you've met with Carolyn and they've walked in your backyard and, and what you're saying is accurate, then they likely will just, one of them, Carolyn, or Carolyn's come onto the chair, John, eight years. But they need to write a letter to us just saying that they've evaluated your property. They're basically saying everything that you've said, but putting on a piece of paper. So then we can then have a paper trail to say that it would be a financial hardship to do anything different and we can sign it off and then no one can come back to us and say, why did you do them a favor? Because they have a yellow house and my blue house didn't get that. So we're just looking for a paper trail.
Blue house sucks.
Yeah, blue house sucks. So we'll try to make it easy for you as possible. I'll call them and talk to them, um, for what you have your pool. But with that said, if they have a different story, then obviously we're at ground zero again.
Okay.
And it's important to be consistent. So, okay. And what, so Conservation, and you're gonna have a buddy at Conservation that will explain to them what we need, so that you don't have to say, well, what I think they said is, you know. And they're saying, we don't have to do that, you know? So there'll be someone there that can say, yeah, the board needs that, um, and he's done it in the past. So, um, yeah, you have to get on their agenda.
Yeah, I will talk to them tomorrow and I'll let you know. I have your contact information here. I'll let you, I'll let you know if we're gonna, you might want to be there on the meeting Wednesday as well, but I'll see if we can get on their agenda for a minute.
Okay.
Okay. Besides Conservation, what did we ask you to do?
Pictures.
Okay.
And some indication of the issues on this side of the property. Pictures will probably help articulate that.
Pictures will help, yeah, just, and I think a little write-up. And again, what we're looking for is why you can't put it someplace else. And, you know, saying that the terrain is such, the, you know, incline on that side of the property and then you have the pictures beyond that, that would be helpful. The fact that this is a garage, I think I put that on there, that it's a garage, because that is why you can't move the driveway, besides the expense, okay? And again, I caution you to be definite about where you're putting that fence, okay? Because we can say pool 40-foot, fence 35, okay? Just so that the definition of a structure doesn't enter into it when you apply for building permit. You know, they say 40 feet, you're doing 35, so we can be sure to write that in, so it doesn't become a problem. Would you talk to those Conservation folks and tell them it's really helpful?
I will. I'll remind them.
So we're gonna do pictures. Um, you've got your well and septic on here, do you?
Yes.
Was there anything else that we wanted, just so that we don't...
Actually, was the septic on or I didn't see?
It was on.
Yeah.
I was on the line, I was on my own line.
All right, continue. Sorry, I didn't mean to drop.
On the street. Well, I did mean to drop.
Right, okay. Is it your request that we, um, continue the hearing so that you can gather further information?
Yes.
No, it didn't.
Did you want that for next one?
How many have we got on the next one?
Just two, so, two with...
Well, right now, we just have, um, continuation of the Capes of Berlin, the other, but, yeah.
We gotta look into this other one, right?
So can I make a motion at the petitioner's request, we continue this to December 11th at 8:00 P.M.?
Yeah, you can. Get in there while you can.
Yeah, grab a spot.
Yeah, quick.
There's an unhappy lady in the back, I know. But we'd like to be done with this, but honestly, um, this is the stuff we need and I know you're trying to do it the right way. And we want, we want to see that you pull, but we have to be consistent or somebody else is gonna say that. How come you let them have their pool? They could have put it over here.
I'm just managing to parent his deal with the children.
Well, it's too cold for swimming right now anyway. You got that for ya.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We'll see you next month.
Hey, where are you cutting trails?
Um, I don't know. It's up, uh, between Peak and Lancaster. I just bought, yeah.
About like 16 acres or something up there or something.
I thought it was 40, but it might have been.
Is it Suburban Valley?
Yeah.
Because Rhodes did bought the 16 acres. That's the one that, here didn't, uh, Walter did.
Oh, right, right, right. Uh, it's the... Wendler, the Wendler?
Wow, I want you... I want you to take this, but what I'd like you to do, see if it received. But I want you to, um, make a copy of it for me and leave it in the, if I'm gonna have to write it up, you know what I'm saying? And, um, at least the first two pages that she's banned and the DEP letter need to go to Amy. Yes.
And I didn't get a copy of that. I'm just, I'm a horrible person.
That was mine. That was mine.
Do you think that too high on the phone?
Not at all. Not at all.
Well, that's okay. Just I'm gonna have to write it up. So if you could send, scan and send the application form in the Department of Environmental. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call Margaret in the morning and ask her, you know, if it's okay.
Checking on the baby.
I'm a baby.
And all that I'm wondering is we're gonna have that hearing. If Amy needs to show up for both, we're gonna have an hour in between.
And if this is all to some relation, she's gonna be there anyways. She's at Berlin. Oh, yeah, hour in between and then...
Sammy's friend.
So we'll just do it that way, yeah. She'll get two, the double...
All right, so am I, am I sending anything to Amy yet or you have to talk to Margaret?
No, let me just talk to Margaret because we have permission for this Friday, okay? I don't know that the selectmen have to do anything, but, and it's not gonna be a real project to write up the other 40 feet one, because I'm sure I have that on my beautiful last time. All right, do we have anything else or can we close this bugger?
Close the bugger.
Okay, I want to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to close this bugger.
All those in favor, aye? All those opposed, we're retired.